I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It doesn't look like we have any public discussion. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
So moved.
Alright, we have a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. Um, any discussion on the motion or the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Um, next up is claims. Any, um, questions on any of that or? I guess one thing I did see, I don't have it wrote down here, um, there was, looks like there's equipment repairs that did Doug pay for himself and then reimbursing, like eighteen hundred bucks. Does anyone know what that's about?
No.
Okay. I guess I was just curious about that, but I can ask him later too.
Containment election system software, that's all, that's the stuff that we're going to be talking about today. It's in there?
Yes. In the give board folder?
Well, in the, the claims here.
No.
No, that's, that's stuff we've already got.
Yeah. No, we're not, none of, none of that's in the claims, what we're talking about today.
Okay.
What's that claim for?
Uh, it just says election systems and software fourteen thousand.
Yeah, that's just our update yearly.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Or some, I don't know what it is, but it's not.
It's, it's, it's normal.
It's not standard.
No.
Okay.
Any other questions on the claims? Otherwise, or do I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Roger. Okay, um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
Claims stuff, and there are two credit cards, I believe.
Okay. I'll get this. Um, liquor license is up next, um.
Spring Valley.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Spring Valley's liquor license. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Alright, um. Next up is discussion on dog ordinance, um. I had looked at the one from Humboldt that you had sent Roger, but I hadn't looked at anything else, um. I guess, do you think, do you think something simple like that would be the, the best form, or do we need to have it a little more complex for other situations that may come up?
That's the only one that I could find locally around here that Hancock County has, where they, they, they keep it simple, but they incorporate so they can also like if there's a consistent problem of somebody getting cattle loose or some type of livestock, but I guess, I don't know where you guys are at on this, but obviously I take the recommendation of, of our county attorney, but if we're gonna do a countywide dog ordinance, I'd like to see there be a penalty section of it, so that we can enforce it right into the county ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, we have to follow state laws on some of the situations, like most recently, uh, as you guys are aware, we had citizens come down from the Locks Creek area about back a plane. We've also had a couple of dogs that were out running loose and, uh, ended up killing some domesticated turkeys, chickens, sheep. Uh, we followed the process to that, and unfortunately, the courts agreed to allow the owner to get one of the dogs back. And then a short time later, we had a report that that dog was out chasing cattle. So I think if we're gonna do a county ordinance, we need to get Mr. Holmes' recommendation on making sure we have an enforcement part of it, so that we can have a little teeth behind it. Obviously, we still gotta follow some of the state laws is, um, of, you know, how we would follow the procedure if, uh, if a dog is determined that it needs to be legally euthanized, but there are state laws out there that if a dog is chasing livestock or threatening a hurt person, you can legally shoot it, uh, whether it's tagged or untagged. So if we're gonna do a county ordinance, we need to mirror the state ones, but then also have a county, um, penalty section behind it. The biggest obstacle that we're gonna face, and that's why I brought Mark with me this morning, is we have no place to put these dogs. And right now, uh, Mark, the city doggo on hires Mark on a part-time basis to take care of the city complaints on dogs running loose. And Mark can correct me if I'm wrong here, but it sounds like they're gonna be closing their pound for pretty long period of time because of the, uh, reconstruction they're gonna be doing out of the water treatment plant. So we're gonna have not, we're gonna have a situation here where we'll have no place to put dogs for possibly a year or two.
Could be.
Possibly the next couple of years until, unless the city comes up with an alternative. Um, I know the chief of police has come to me and said, maybe we should look at a county-city option where we could put city and county dogs if they're running loose, or we need to impound them. Right now, if we impound a dog in the city, then the owner has to pay a fee to get the dog returned. And that's something we could look at similar here. If there's a county dog running loose, we could impound it and then charge a fee to pick it up.
Do you know what that fee is, off the top of your head by any chance?
Usually the first time is twenty-five dollars, second time it's fifteen, third time it's a hundred dollars.
Okay.
And it's charging so much day to for housing the dog, food, and animal care.
Okay.
Is there any good vets that house dogs and you could?
If, if we go that route, the vets would have to get a different, um, license or something like that. Because they can't have dogs that are getting, uh, vaccinated, things like that, so.
You'd have to keep them separate?
Yes.
Okay.
Just one other word, we don't have an easy solution.
Not right now.
Not right now, and our biggest complaints around the county are dogs running loose that get on other people's property. And whether they're threatening or not, isn't, you know, there's, there's a difference between a dog that's running loose and is friendly and just being a bobblesome or barking, and then dogs that are running loose and are actually being aggressive or cause someone to be fearful. And there are state laws for that, but if we're gonna do a county ordinance, I feel like we just need to make sure there's a, uh, so that the deputies can issue a citation under the county ordinance, and then if we have to take it to the state level, we will. Uh, but as I said, sometimes, uh, even going that route, I, I was a little frustrated because these, these two dogs that we had that actually killed livestock, sheep and chickens and turkey, uh, one of them, the landowner shot, lawfully so he shot it. Second one got away. We located it, we impounded it, went through the court system, the judge allowed the owner to get the dog back, and then within a week or two, it was running loose again. So that's where I feel we need to have an ordinance that we can enforce and at least make the, the owner of the dog have some consequences, you know, paying fines, um, and then after if it's a consistent problem, we'll move it into the state level if we have to, but I think that's the frustration for us. Um, we have city ordinances in small town we can enforce, but in the rural area, we have no, no county ordinance on it. And that, Hancock's is broad for that reason. I talked to the sheriff, said, well, that way if we have something that the cattle are getting out every week, we can enforce that ordinance. It's not just strictly dogs.
You got any good ideas, Mark, where to put dogs? I don't have it.
Um, we got a couple of ideas that we're looking at, um, we're kinda talking with Slagle, maybe we're looking at maybe renting his building out until, um, we get our facility up and going again. Um, uh, and that we're kind of just looking at other options that I guess right now, just kind of up in the air with everything, but we're getting, at that time, we're gonna make a decision though. So I don't know what the city and county wanna combine and do something together, or what the exact answer is.
What?
It's gonna have to be steep enough so that you can pay the boarding of the dog for the time that keep the fine or.
The biggest problem right now is when we get dogs and it seems like people take the dogs and they dump them off in the county and you'll be holding them for a few months at a time because it's hard to find places for some of these dogs, and so you may be holding them for a long period of time, so I mean, sometimes you may have four of my dogs in the pound, and that's probably not big enough, be big enough for all the dogs that come in. So I mean, we need to get enough room, but yet we gotta try to get them out in the front of this way as we can.
Has there been any thought or discussion of using, uh, one of the fairground buildings?
I guess we didn't really think about that.
Yeah.
I mean, the biggest problem is we wanna make sure we're not having the dogs in towns that are barking and causing problems and towns and in that situation. So we're trying to look in like, kind of house, skirt down, so we can get the dogs out, towns that they are barking, they're not causing ruckus in towns.
Well, if they, down in one of those livestock buildings, you know, it's the only other thing that's around, close enough to that area is the hospitals, I don't know.
And that's very valid, and that's not, that's not.
Yeah.
There, there is.
Further on back.
Yeah.
The only ti- the only time you'd have an issue is during fair week, you know, having to find a different spot, but just as like a temporary solution while you guys are remodeling.
Have to work with the fair board on that stuff, but, um.
It's a very good option, that's, something we have to look into too.
What all, what all do you need for something like that? Does that have to be heated and everything, I'm assuming?
Right now, like our dog pound is, we, we need to have more heat and some air conditioning or something like that, so when it's getting ninety degrees out, you know, the dogs are not sitting on the heat and everything like that, so dog pound's okay, but yet we need to get some more.
Definitely needs improvements.
Improvements. So I'd be nice to think you can go inside, be like a little bit of a cooler building during the summertime, but yet have a little bit of heat here in the wintertime, so when it's minus thirty out, they're not sitting out in the freezing cold temperatures either.
Yeah.
We've been fortunate that Mark is employed by the Cassuth County Sheriff's Office, but he's also helping the city out by being their, their, uh, dog person. So when we do have a county dog, we've been lucky enough that we can put it down there until we find a solution. So I think that's why the city's thinking, well, maybe the city and county need to incorporate something for both, but uh, and maybe marketing answers better. I don't know what the percentage of dogs that come from the city doggo on or dogs that come in from the county, but uh, when they're, when they're inside the city limits, we enforce the city ordinance, we issue citations, they go to court. The, the owner of the dog goes to court. When they're out in the county, the only solution we have is hopefully Mark can take them and put them in the city pound for now, until we find an owner or come up with a, a solution for it. So yeah, I, I mean, it needs to have discussion and, um, the challenge that both the city and county are gonna face is when they close that one for remodeling, neither one of us have a place to put the dogs, dogs temporarily for now. I mean, that's a solution that if we discussed it with the fair board, that something temporary, I guess that would be a decision between the man and the fair board. But yeah, otherwise, the only other suggestion I'd have is getting, get Todd's advice on how to coordinate a good ordinance that, you know, has a little bit of consequence on it.
Would, would it be good to have something that applied to the county and the county kind of the same? City doggo on and the county as far as enforcement issues?
I think so. I don't think there'd be a.
Be consistent?
Yes. Yep. Yep. Cause like Mark said, we, we, it's hard to prove, but a person does want a dog, they take him on to grab a room and throw him out, dump him out. So yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to be consistent with both. You like to think that that kind of stuff doesn't happen, but it does.
Oh yeah, happens by me all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't have to have in the refuge.
We actually had a dog that was actually microchipped, it was from St. Louis that somebody dropped off up here.
Oh, no.
They actually did go up and get the dog and bring it back to St. Louis, but it was a bad situation, so.
That's a long ways from home.
Yeah.
I never thought thirty-seven years ago when I became a police officer, that one of my biggest headaches would be dealing with dog complaints, but it is. Tammy, remember, it's two over at Sheriff's Office. We get dog complaints weekly, numerous of them. So it is an issue that we need to, you know, address and try to come up with some type of a solution. But yeah, I think a county ordinance that mirrors the city ones would be a good idea. That's all we come over for, in case you have any questions, if you have any more questions on it, but. I do like the fact, though, that we don't just make it strictly a dog ordinance. It could be for, you know, if there's cattle getting out. Not too long ago, we had the situation up north of Long Rock, where we ended up seizing a whole herd of cattle for that problem consistently being loose. So I think it'd be a good idea to incorporate dogs slash livestock.
Yeah, and I.
However, Todd would recommend to write it?
I think it's, I mean, the, the step up in penalties would be important, because yeah, I mean, stuff happens once or twice here or there. That's, that's probably not your guys' biggest headache, and it's probably not ours either. But it's the consistent repeat offenders that you really need a tool to address the situation.
There again, there, there are, uh, state laws that, that govern that, but it's nice to have something where you could start off with, okay, listen, here's the consequences. This is the third time we've been out here, we're gonna issue a citation in our county ordinance. If it continues, then it's gonna have to go up to the state level.
Yeah.
That would be a perfect example right there, because that went on for several years.
Yeah, I did. Well, sounds good, I guess.
Come up with really good ideas, come back.
Alright. Yeah, right now, we're trying to figure out how we're gonna temporarily take care of it while, while it's under construction, so.
Yeah.
And that could be one to two years, the way it sounds.
How soon are they starting that, do you know?
Uh, this spring.
So we don't have a whole lot of planning time?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, um. Election software, Tammy, wanna?
Thank you. Um, yeah, so on Friday, Ten X, which is a company that does software and equipment for elections, came and did a demonstration for us. I asked, uh, Christie and Melissa and Derek, uh, to be in here, so if you had any questions for them, or if they had any additional information, they could supply that too. It was a wonderful demonstration. We were all quite impressed. They answered all of our questions. We, it was a two-part. He was there with what our iPads would look like and new printers would look like, and then we had a lady via Zoom that was going through the process as well on her end, explaining more of the technical aspect of it. Um, we had a lot of questions about security. They answered them all, um, to help us, um, just to go back a little bit with the update that we had in Precinct Atlas last year, which is the software that we currently use. They went online. Previously, Christie used to take and download the information and then take that USB stick and download it onto our laptops. Last year, they changed that, so it's all done electronically. Ten X does the same thing. So Ten X, we'd have a website, um, that would have, we'd have our own URL, which would be black, white, whitelisted. Okay, sorry, I'm still new to this technical thing. Whitelisted, which means it's not accessible. That does not happen at the polls. That's only happening when we do our updates and when we're downloading our information to the laptops. Correct? Am I correct in that? So this is not something happening on at the polls. This is just, um, when we're downloading, getting everything ready, that that connection is happening. The laptops, like we have some precincts that have two laptops. They're called masters. There's no internet connection between them. It's called Apple peer-to-peer. It's not, like if somebody brings in their phone, it's not accessible to that. It's just those two computers talking to each other, so somebody can't go to one computer at one precinct, and then again at the other computer at the other precinct. Um, it's just so that the information is being shared between those two. It's nothing online or downloading any information or getting any information like that. Um, it's just so that those two in that precinct are sharing the same information. There is, um, no, we're not, it does have the capability if we choose to at some point, so that we can look at from our office and look and see what's happening at the polls. That's not something I'm interested in doing. That's something I am, am not. But it, if we choose to later on, that is something that they, that some counties do use.
The software has the capability.
There, some counties now do use that. I'm not interested in that part of it. Um, so we do not wish to do that. Plus, in Cassuth County, most of our precincts, rural communities do not have that capability anyway. If you're in Liverin, there's, there's no way you're gonna be able to access that. So that's not something we're interested in doing. Security wise, we all feel very comfortable with, um, the security, um, levels of it. What am I missing, ladies? What do you wanna share with them about? Just so you know, um, we have had our laptops and printers that we're currently using now for five years. So they are gonna be due to be updated, so we are gonna have that cost eventually anyway. You like to replace them every five years? So we are, we would have to replace what we have in the next coming year or so, um, so just remembering that also.
Something I would say is, I think with the Ten X, it would be a lot easier for our, uh, PEOs. Precinct Atlas, their changes made it more complicated, I think, for them, especially the, you know, the older ones. And this one is just, you have your red light, yellow light, green light. It's very simple for them. I think they'll like it.
Which means quicker voting process at the polls, and I think that's one thing that we struggled with, um, at the last election, city school election, is we had longer lines because the process was not smooth and they struggled a little bit. Um, we had more calls this last election than we've ever had, um, so I think this will speed up. And with a big primary in general coming up, I think that's important, that we get people through as quickly as possible, and that our election workers are confident in what they're doing.
Uh, do, does Ten X, do they provide training for?
Yes. Yep, yep. So the quote that I put in your packets, it's in one of your board folders, um, I think it's called Ten X.
You labeled it Precinct Atlas.
Okay. Oh, I did?
Yeah.
Sorry. It's supposed to be Ten X. Sorry about that. Apparently I had Precinct Atlas on the mind, so it's Ten X, um. But that quote in there includes the training. They will come here and train all of us, and then we will have training like we normally do with our election workers, but that price is included in that quote.
They got twenty-five iPads, but seventeen carrying cases. Is there some that will just be here?
No, it's because all the cases hold two laptops and two printers. So those precincts that we have more than one laptop, we only need one case. Yep.
I did see that it's a double unit, but I didn't, didn't.
It is nice. They all hold two, so that works really well. The cases are nice, um, cases. It kind of reminds me of the case James Bond carries, you know, kind of looks like that. Matt Amiels or anything. Yeah, yeah, no, he has some aside, but, um, yeah, it's, they have it set up really nice, um, so I'm confident in it. So this is, anything else you guys wanna say about the demo on Friday?
I think you have it pre-discovered.
Um, this is kind of, I'm asking a two, two-question, two-part, um, request, I guess. One, to approve the quote and buying the software and the equipment from Ten X. And two, paying for it with L A T C F funds, which, um, I have a resolution if you approve that today, that we can go ahead. Our, we have used some of the L A T C F funds that came in. We budgeted sixty-six thousand, it came in because we used some of the money that we have in the courthouse for the bulletproof glass, so we've only spent like less than fifty thousand, so we have plenty to cover the cost of this if you wish to pay for those with L A T C F funds, so. Um, I would ask for approval for the equipment and the software licensing and to pay for it with L A T C funds by resolution.
So, um.
Sorry, Derek.
I think Tammy did a great job bringing in another vendor besides Precinct, Precinct Atlas. It used to be, ten years ago, Survo County, uh, wrote Precinct Atlas, managed it, came up, did all the installs, and eventually got too big for them to handle, so it got transferred down to ISAC. And as part of that process, the programmers that originally wrote the software were off that project and they brought in new programmers, and so they rewrote the whole application. And during that process, I think they kind of lost sight of what the auditors wanted and only focused on the larger counties, and so we've kind of gone away from that. And so another solution that, um, the auditors have looked at is Ten X. There are quite a few counties that are running it successfully. It is much smoother from the IT standpoint. We spent a lot of hours this last go-around with, um, the auditor staff, with the IT staff, trying to make that work and getting the software installed, so um, just from a labor standpoint, I think it'll be easier to handle the IT side of things. Um, we'll still have some updates, just like we did with the Windows side of things, but, um, we're hoping that'll be a lot smoother, so um, I would definitely, um, recommend that be a clue for with that as well. I think it's a good solution, so, so. That's for.
Thank you. Derek did say he reached out to other counties that do have it.
Yeah, a lot of positive feedback.
That's good.
Yep, and a lot of counties that manage it remotely from the auditor's office that can see. We're not positioned to do that. We're interested, but, um, there are companies that are doing that as well, so. Yeah, I think it's a step forward. And then on the old equipment, we could list that on GovDeals if you wanted to. There will be some cost recovery there. You know, maybe we get three to five thousand on income on that side of things. Uh, we pull all the hard drives out of laptops, sell those. I think we have twenty-eight or twenty-nine of those. And then HP portable, or Sora portable printers. But yeah, it should be a lot cleaner, easier to set up. Um, I think it's a good, good process, good solution, so, um, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I think that's good. I appreciate looking into the other option and stuff as well. That's, that's all good. Um, my only question potentially concerned would be the L A T C F funds, um, with election stuff, we can pull that out of supplemental, right?
Correct.
So we're, we're not limited in any way in that capacity. The L A T C F funds can be used for pretty much anything. Um, so I guess just a matter of preference of where it comes from or how it's used. I don't, I don't know, that's a huge issue either way, but that would, if we did not use it, it would give us more flexibility for other things.
Sure.
Would be my only point.
And I understand that. I was just trying to come up with a solution of how to pay for it, because it's a large amount.
And it's not a bad idea, just discussion wise, it's a
Yeah.
weighing the pros and cons.
And the reason I did it is because they set it so, we're what, two, did they say two months out for ordering the equipment? So because we have an election in June, I need to get them a decision so we can get the equipment ordered, so.
Which, that makes sense.
That's why I'm asking for it. Uh, you know, trying to get all my decks in a row is to give you the information right away.
Timeline now. Yep.
Is it an old company that's gonna be around for a long time? It's not something that's.
Yeah, this is, they're pretty stable. They've got a lot of software.
I think he told us nineteen eighty-four.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not gonna be something that's out of date in four years and we have to go through it all over again?
And it.
Well, I don't know about that.
You don't have to do updates and.
But, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
You're talking to an IT guy.
Yeah, I, I'm sure there'd be updates and stuff, but, but it actually, I mean, annual fee is Atlas here for
Three thousand.
Thirty, thirty-three seventy-five is less than what we pay right now.
Yeah, I put the comparable in there so you can handle.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's good as well.
Um, they do, I handle multiple states, so it's not just a local Iowa-based company. Um, it is, they do handle multiple other states, but they do, we did ask about Iowa, making sure that Iowa laws are followed, and, and they are very, very strict on that, to make sure that, um, Iowa is covering Iowa and our representative is from this area, actually, somewhere.
He's in Spirit Lake. Yeah, I thought it was here.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
That's relatively close.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Did I answer your question, Roger? Roger, did that answer your question?
I don't, I don't have any issue with the purchase software, any of that. I'd, I'd be fully supportive of that. I think the only discussion is where we, where we're using money from.
Sure, and we're gonna have to do a budget amendment either way, so.
Yeah.
Do we need to make this as a motion as a two-part, since we're discussing the approval of the, the quote and then the approval to use the L A T C F? The quote and then the approval to use the L A T C F?
You can do it either way, whatever you prefer.
Could be done either way, yeah, um, I mean, really, it could be one. Um, if we do use the L A T C F funds, that resolution Tammy's got prepared here. Yeah, that's up top, top, um, so that'd be an option, otherwise if we just approve the purchase.
My other question with that, L A T C F funds, I mean, do we have any more courthouse security stuff that we're foreseeing that we're gonna need to?
The only thing I wanted to talk to you about, having had a chance, is. The, um, evidence storage room at the law enforcement center, I would like to add that into the system so they can have a log. I don't know how we missed that on the first go around, but I thought that would be a good addition, I talked to Roger a little bit about that. Uh, that way they have an automatic log, they can provide it to, um, defense attorneys, so, uh, about thirty-five hundred for that, otherwise I don't have anything. Unless you've got something.
Not, not that I am aware of.
And we wouldn't.
But that doesn't mean so.
Run over that, that's, yeah, so I guess, you know, if that's the case, if we don't have anything, fine, just break now, I don't see a problem using L A T C F funds.
And I, I wouldn't say it's a bad use of the funds, it's just we have more flexibility there. Because it's any governmental purpose except lobbying, so I mean, we, we can move that around more flexible.
Right, right.
Election stuff, we can, whether, whether we do it now or next year, even if we stayed with the same stuff and replaced the computers. You could do it under the supplemental levy and it's the cost of the election, so I mean.
Yep.
It's a matter of preference of which, I mean, yeah.
I would move to approve the purchase of the ten X election software and iPads and to pay it with using L A T C F funds.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Do we need to include that resolution number in the motion?
Yes, please.
Should be included, yes.
It is zero-two dash zero-six dash two-four dash zero-one.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Jerks.
Yes.
Whack jerk.
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for coming in. Just the first page?
Yes.
Perfect. There you go.
Hey, good morning Doug, we're ready for you in the boardroom.
Thanks.
Bye.
Yeah, if you do, feel free. I think I'm gonna go grab some water while we're waiting for Doug.
Okay, and I will do the same.
Morning Doug.
Morning everyone.
Do you have anything for construction in the right of way or just?
There is no construction in the road right of way, no questions.
I do have a final payment, uh, for the, uh, federally funded bridge project south of Titanca. That we need a signature of the chair for, there's no action necessary, so. But if you'll sign on that line there, Kyle, please, and we'll get final payment to them.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. This is not, good morning, how are you? I'm doing well, thanks.
Just a one on the.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Nothing to be acted on, so I, I wasn't too worried.
Uh, you said there's no road.
No, thank you.
For action anyway, you had a, uh. Item in our folder for a road vacation discussion, do you want to do that next or wherever you wanna go?
Uh, we can talk about that, that's fine.
Okay, I just.
Jim Heldorfer, or excuse me, Phil Heldorfer, stopped in the office last fall. Um. This road between section thirty-two and thirty, excuse me, thirty-three and thirty-two of.
Greenwood.
Greenwood Township. He is requesting that we vacate the north half mile of that. And even possibly, depending on what other landowners, uh, would think. North of, uh, there's a culvert in that road, if you look at the, uh, road vacation exhibit there. Um, there's a drainage ditch that runs there, uh, Heldorfer's own on the east. And the west side don't care, don't carry farms as a Heldorfer piece of property. Um, so they own on both sides of the road, the half mile of Ninety and Avenue. Uh, Phil owns on the west side of the road, uh, north of the drainage ditch. Glenn Preston owns on the north side of the road, on the east side of the road, excuse me, north of the drainage ditch. So he has requested that the board vacate that, so I'm just bringing it to your attention and wondering if you. Would like to, uh, uh, go ahead and start that process. It is a level B road, minimal maintenance, uh, the north half mile of it is, uh. It does not drain, so during wet periods of the year, it is, uh.
Gets cold.
It's a road that has, has areas, it's really a dirt road. It, the right of way is being farmed, it would be of benefit to the road department to definitely get that vacated.
Wouldn't we research vacating the whole road?
We could, we would certainly do that, however, Steve Colash, uh, would be.
He'd have to have access.
Somehow would need access, and if.
And Glenn Preston, well, Glenn Preston, what if you do the whole thing?
Well, Preston has access from, uh, from three hundred forty street. Steve Colash, his only access is Ninety Avenue. So he'd have to go over property that was either owned by Gray or Preston or both. To get to his property.
Uh, if you vacate up to the drainage ditch there, um, Glenn Preston, he'll have a hard time getting to his north side of the property. Once he builds a bridge across that drainage ditch.
There is a culvert there now, so.
You'd have access on the north side of that, okay.
And we, to just give you some, uh. History, we have even gone to the point where, uh, entering into an agreement that landowners. Would agree to vacate it if we put a new structure in.
Okay.
Which it does cost some money, but the road is vacated, it goes back to property tax. Uh, the road department doesn't have to maintain it.
Do you know what size culvert is through?
I do not, right off the top of my head. Oh, I'm sure it's a eight to ten foot.
Okay.
Round, cord, cordyne metal pipe.
Yeah.
Or might even be a structural plate for all that, I, but it's some sort of metal pipe.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's not a bridge.
You may have said this already, but it has Glenn Preston been involved with the conversation.
I've not talked with Glenn, he would probably be the first person I'd visit with, just to see what his feelings are. Um, but we can certainly have a public hearing and, uh, talk to the landowners and see. Uh, see what the feelings are, and I could even talk to Steve Colash a little bit, just see what his feelings are, I'm not sure about. Uh, the Gray trust and who was involved in that, I can certainly look and see. Is that Titanca, Gray?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that lives on, by Harlan, on that curvy road. It will play days though.
That, that Gray family, yeah, lives off to the.
Ron and Judy.
West side?
If, if it's not, yeah, Ron and Judy, yeah.
Okay, well, I could, I have their son as an attorney up in Fort City, right?
Correct.
I got, I have contacts for everybody.
And I'm pretty sure I have Ron or Judy, they're both there.
But they, they have access off of three forty street, it's whether they entertain, uh, an easement. We worked with, we worked with them on an easement, uh, to vacate a road right to the north of Harlan's. That Gray family, Harlan gave them an easement.
Yep.
Is that right?
Oh, to get, to get back by the slew.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So they, they would probably remember that just a little bit. It's a matter of whether's, uh, all parties involved would be willing to do something to help. All right, I, well, I mean, does the board, would the board like me to pursue this a little bit more?
Yes.
If, if you have conversations with everyone, at least get us, get us the rough idea.
I'll start having some conversations and we'll go, we'll move forward with that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Uh. We do have an employee, the road department, I think I mentioned it in January, or excuse me. After, the week after it happened, but, uh, the employee, uh, has a hardship, medical hardship right now. Is, uh, if he's not used all of his leave today, it's very close. To being all used, we did put a, uh, he requested the catastrophic leave. We put it in the, the, uh, payroll information for the road department, we also sent it out to all employees last week. And happy, very happy to say that, uh, employees are, are donating, so. Thank you to all the employees of road department and all county employees for those donations. But I just wanted the board to know what's going on there. Um, I am in the process of writing a letter to the, uh, legislators. That represent Cassuth County, uh, the House files seven-one-eight, as you're aware, reduced or put. Put, uh, limits on the growth. And this is going all over the state, where the secondary road departments are seeing how. That limit in growth is ma, is jeopardizing their local effort. And I wanna let the legislators know, I believe, uh, the county engineers association will probably be visiting with legislators also. Uh, when I do get the, get the letter, I will copy the board supervisor, so you're aware. But I just wanna show them how their, uh, restrictions, uh. May affect Cassuth County secondary roads, make them aware of that. So I'm working on that right now, uh, we've got some, uh, applicants for positions, we will be talking with the foreman. Uh, visiting with them and getting some interviews ready to go on that. And, um, then I'm working on, I guess, once we get the Cassuth Waste Management Association. Get the transfer station budget set, we will get an annual meeting set, so that's kind of everything that I have.
Yeah, on the, um, local efforts, I think I did visit with our, um. Local legislators for House and Senate already on that briefly, so if you could put a letter together, that'd be good.
Okay.
Anything else for Doug here from the board? Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up to discussion with our auditor.
Okay, let's see what we have for next week. We have. Annual update and funding request from Healthy Harvest of North Iowa. Apparently they have talked to us before about funding requests, they have not done that in a couple of years. I did tell them that this would be a little late for this year, but she just wanted to talk to you and maybe set the, the tone for next year. So she is planning on coming on Tuesday.
Wasn't they asked in a previous?
I do not, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't even remember them, so I don't know if it was before me or during me. Healthy Harvest of North Iowa, um, provided by Andrea.
Do you remember anything?
Evelyn Sizer and Joanne Repke Bodie, owner of Bodie's Moonlight Gardens. So I, I don't remember, but it, I, it could have been before it was here.
Is that the, Beanie Bodie's wife?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, transfers, loss transfer, and then our regular stuff that's only happen for next week. Um, I did make a calendar of our budget deadlines and everything coming up.
We have budget tomorrow.
Uh.
On the agenda.
Yeah, I just wanted to show you, because we're gonna have to set a date and time for our first. Tax, uh, budget hearing. So this, this is our calendar, of when, um. When we have to send the notice, when we have to public, publish the notice, when we, the deadline is with the D O M, when we have to send the mailings out. Uh, when we have to have the hearings, when we can have the first hearing, so that's what this calendar kind of is. The first public hearing cannot be held until after March twenty-fifth, because. The state wants to allow time for them to get their mailings prior to the first hearing, cause that mailing will have the date of the first hearing on it. And since that can't be sent until the twentieth, or it has to be sent by the twentieth, the twenty-fifth is the earliest we can hold, uh, a hearing. So I'm hoping we can have our first hearing on the twenty-sixth, so I'm going to be putting on the. Uh. Agenda on the twenty-first of February to set the date and time for the first public hearing, um, if we can, that way. At the, the ball is rolling and we can every, get everything done that we need to, I'm hoping to have our final budget hearing.
Twentieth?
The twelfth, or twenty-first, sir.
When, that's Wednesday.
Oh, it must be the twentieth then, I must have been looking at, who knows what I was looking at.
Twentieth is Tuesday.
Yeah, so, um.
February twentieth.
Yeah, February.
February twentieth.
Two weeks from today.
Yeah.
Yeah, twentieth.
I would have changed that again.
Yeah, fine.
Um. So that's what I'm hoping to do, that, I'm hoping to have the second and final budget hearing with our whole budget. On April sixteenth, our deadline is April thirtieth, I like to have a couple of weeks in there, so that if something happens, we have time to correct it or fix anything. Um, that we need, so, so that's what I'm hoping is the sixteenth to have that final hearing.
Of April?
April, yes, I know we have several months going on here, but it takes time when you have to publish ten and twenty, and you have to, it all takes a lot of time.
No stats on itself.
And the first public hearing that we have has to be a separate meeting with a separate agenda, we cannot combine it with our regular meeting. It has to be completely separate, so I'm hoping to have that on the, um, twenty-sixth of March at one o'clock. In the afternoon, um, so that we meet that criteria, you can have it on the same day, you can even have it right after another one, as long as it's. So that we meet that criteria. You can have it on the same day, you can even have it right after another one, as long as it's completely separate.
Like the, like the canvas and, yes, we separate.
Completely separate, so that's my plan with that. I thought if we do it at one, then, then we've met that criteria.
Okay.
So, that's what else I have. Has anybody come up with anybody to replace Marine on the, on the NICA board?
I've asked and got solid no.
Oh, well, thank you for asking Josh, I appreciate that.
I, I had someone from city government that, that, he's been kind of involved with the KC EDC. So I asked him if he wanted to go represent the county over at NICA, I think he said no.
Well, good for asking, thank you. Okay, I'll keep reminding you. Um, thank you for listening to me about the Tenex software and for your approval. It is what's gonna be best for Cassuth County and I'm, we are very excited to initiate this software and make things smoother and more secure. So we're very impressed to hear about the whitelisting, although that's still over my head. Anything that they can do to make it more secure. Makes me feel better about it, so. I'm sure Josh knows what that is, but I do not, they had to. They had to explain it to me a couple of times, so, um, they said it's, it's pretty secure, so. Yes. That's all I have.
Sounds good for discussion? Nothing wrong?
Greenage is all.
Josh?
Yeah, I didn't have anything.
Carter? Um, I will be going to Des Moines for statewide supervisors day, which is on Thursday. I'll be going down Wednesday. And then Friday, I will be heading out to DC for the NICA legislative conference. So I will be back on Wednesday next week, so I won't be here for meetings, so. You'll get to run that meeting if you're, if you're Carter.
Should be here. Just curious if both of you have gotten, we don't have a meeting.
We just don't have a meeting. Okay, I didn't know if it came down to one of us.
Three.
That shouldn't happen.
I don't think there's a vice vice chair.
No, no.
If, I mean, if there was really an emergency or whatever, you could appoint a temporary chair for that meeting.
Then that's what I was thinking too.
Um, nine times out of ten, you're not gonna have that situation most likely.
I've always had that question, just never asked.
But yeah, it, you would just have to have it on the agenda for that day to appoint temporary.
Yep.
Believe, so. Sounds good. Uh, then we can go to drainage here.
Can I go grab Marge?
Sure. And then.
I'll just do that, I gotta run down to her.
Do you need to step out?
We got five minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
I need to go sit down.
Kaylee's got, she did Johnson's over, what, it's been bad this morning.
Thanks.
Her pasture just fell off the green.
Wow.
A lot of bean. I don't know, one of those mornings, I guess.
Yeah, um.
But with the closed session thing, I.
Yeah, it'd be good if you could be back for that, um.
Well, it'll be soon, won't it?
Well, relatively. I mean, if, I would say we'd do, um, the commissioners, which will be quick, and then go right into that.
Okay, I'll, I'll just take her on for that. Come there. What's that?
She's coming.
Okay.
Okay.
Got a headache coming.
That's never good.
I know, I know, I don't like it when that happens. You okay, Carter?
Yeah. I might need to leave.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Whenever you need to.
We need to talk to Willie Buggin for different wax for the floors.
Squeak.
Squeak, 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 squeak.
And here I thought it was just me.
Yeah, I know, it's not just you.
Well, and I got new shoes, so that might, might enhance the squeak.
Mine go to after it's got waxed. Roger.
Oh, Roger, sorry, yeah, Roger. See, my head is just not in the game.
Yeah, well, there he is.
There he is.
All right, um, looks like Marge got a couple lined up for, um, Rich Rosenmeyer and Jay Goshi. And I would make a motion to appoint them as commissioners for Drain sixty, so for reclass. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous, but we get to get that taken care of. Perfect. Thanks, Marge. Any, anything else for drainage from, from anyone or from Marge?
Have you heard anything from the claws for Drain sixty-seven?
Um, I've talked to them, I think, two or three times trying to check on stuff and haven't heard, so.
Cassuth County, we're waiting for that reclass.
Yeah, um, if, if you think about, feel free to check in, otherwise I was gonna try and touch base with Dan on another thing too, so. Yeah, we can both touch base with them, but that'll be. Yeah, we do need to get that going. That should have been done a long time ago. Other than that, I don't think I have any right now, so. Well, thanks, Marge.
Thank you.
Um, we'll go to a closed session next here. Just texted Tim, see if he's. Yeah, let me try calling him.
Good timing, cause our recorder was broken and now it just got fixed.
Perfect.
Hello, this is Tim.
Hey, Tim, this is Kyle. We got the whole board except Jack Blath here and our auditor. Is Jason with you or have you, did you see my text and touch base with him at all?
Uh, I, I just saw your text come in just now.
Okay, go.
Jason's in my office, we're ready to roll.
Awesome. Well, I guess, I think we're ready here as board. We gotta, um, switch, switch over to, we're still in open session and stuff right now, so just wanted to call and make sure you're available. Do you guys wanna switch to there or do you wanna just listen?
Yeah, I wanna switch to that.
Okay. Can you guys call into our conference line? Do you have that number and everything handy?
We don't have it handy, but if Jason's got a pen out, we'll, we'll call in as soon as you give it to us.
I will, I'll take a picture of it and send it to you. Um, how about that?
That'll work.
Perfect, we'll do that and we'll catch you on there here in a second. Thanks.
Probably call from my, my landline.
Yep, whatever, whatever works, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep, bye.
Bye.
Okay, um.
Um, not yet, we gotta.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta, um.
Do you wanna open up the line on there?
Yeah.
Let me go have a picture of this.
First conference?
Uh, how, I don't know how they do it. How do you open?
There's, there's a number that you call and he's got the number, so you call.
Oh, oh.
And then host, well, yep, you call this number and then you put in the host pin.
Dial nine, sir. Right, dial nine.
Yes, nine.
Yep.
Welcome to AT&T's teleconference service. Please enter your access code, followed by the pound sign.
Nope, seven three three, seven three nine nine.
Your access code was not recognized. Please re-enter your access code, followed by the pound sign. To join the conference as the host, press star, otherwise, press pound. Please enter your host password, followed by the pound sign. There are two participants on the call, including you. You are joining your conference as the host. For a menu of available commands, press star, pound.
All right, Tim and Jason, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Perfect. Um, we are still in open session here, so I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Per Iowa code twenty-one, five, um, one C.
Some of them.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jerks.
Yeah.
Whack jerk.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes. Motion carried unanimous, so we'll give us a second here and we'll get switched over.